Chairman, we're live.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. And to those on YouTube, we're in the afternoon session of June 24th. Our next agenda item is the budget workshop at 2:00. So our esteemed accountant is here, Gabby. Where do you want to start?
Welfare.
Chairman, we're going to start with, yeah, the welfare director is on your agenda. Commissioners, this is our contribution that has previously been made to YCAP. I don't know if YCAP is still operational in our community, if commissioners are in contact with the board, with the administrative office in Payette. But before we budget any type of contribution, I do think that the commissioners need to have some conversations with what, have some conversations with YCAP Administrative Office and also try to determine what type of operations they are going to have in Valley County. If they have any, I don't know.
At this moment, they don't have anything. And I don't think that we give the contribution because I'm made aware that these still are not audited. So I don't want to put taxpayer funds there. But Doug, how can we use this for indigent? How can we put an extra 10 into indigent? Because we're being asked now to provide rental assistance, which we never have before. So maybe doing more in what we can do if people want to bring in some of their claims to us, but. See what I'm saying?
For like power bills?
Yeah, the rental assistance, the power bills. I mean, that's.
We even have an indigent budget.
We do, Commissioners, and what you're, what you're funding, your existing indigent budget on is what you have in remaining cash. And what you have in remaining cash for indigent is approximately $220,000. We were planning on funding an, our indigent fund again, if the commissioners are inclined, and utilizing that fund. However, if you do recall, Commissioners, there was a presentation from Ignite Idaho. They kind of wanted, I think further discussions needed to take place, but they were trying to create a program where they were going to be handling all of those applications and potentially the county could make a contribution to them. I don't know. And I don't know, I think before that's done, it needs to be vetted through the prosecuting attorney's office.
So I would agree with that.
A lot of conversations needed to be taking place regarding the indigent fund. Well, what I'd like to have the commissioners consider is the budget for the YCAP. And if, if there has been any communication with the YCAP board recently.
I've not had any communication recently. They are still running the daycare in Donley. That's the only thing that I know of in this area. And they still have the Valley one. And I can reach out, leave it there. I can reach out to their board and just, you know, see what their plan is or up here, but. Let's circle that one.
Commissioners, this one is generally not changed over the years, and that's for the general fund reserve. And I think the commissioners have always declined to keep a budget of $350,000 in that budget. That's for any type of emergencies that occur, any unanticipated expenditures, as well as if there are any budgets that go over their overall fund. We use this budget to move money to cover those overages. So that's, at this point in time, Commissioners, I would recommend that we leave the $350,000 for the budget for the general fund reserve.
And do you know, are these Capital One murder cases, are they kind of coming to a head if there are going to be some big bills coming?
I don't know. So Commissioners, what we're doing currently, we're over, we're, we are over budget on our public defense because it's a conflict attorney that we are having to hire. And the state takes over that contract officially as of October 1st. We are getting refunded for one attorney. So we have submitted an application through the Capital Defense Fund. I have submitted an application through the Capital Defense Fund. We are expending approximately $20,000 a month in expenses for that case. The recent reimbursement that we received was only $21,000. We are getting reimbursed for one attorney. To answer your question, we will not be funding that next fiscal year. Commissioners are, are no longer required to budget for public events.
Wish so.
So Doug, are we required to pay for their witnesses to, public defenders' witnesses, we have to pay those costs?
So right now, you're required to pay, well, you're paying for basically an investigator. An investigator that the attorneys have hired.
That was on the prosecutor's side?
No, that is on the defense side. If there are any witnesses for the prosecution side, yes, that will come out of the prosecuting attorney's budget.
And I would recommend if you get into trouble, this is where you pay for some of that. The other issue that can pop up is a West Nile virus. And there's a lot of state code that kicks in, the things you have to do for West Nile, even really lucky.
This is also where we can save a little bit for capital expenditures and that kind of thing, the CAP. And we don't, we don't really have funding mechanisms for the CAP other than in individual budgets. So I know that we have a fairly strong carryover balance, but this is, this is the line item that we actually can start saving some for the future.
You could. But you also uses it for catch. Right?
Correct. If you don't.
So if you're gonna.
So hypothetically, right now, the commissioners could say, we have $300,000 to carry over for next year's budget because you've only expended $41,000. However, I'm going to tell you that there are departments that have gone over their overall budget, IT department, as well as the public defense. So we are going to have to move roughly $100,000 probably to cover those overages.
Such a good contingency.
It's, it's a general fund reserve expense line.
Just like, we'll leave it the same.
I agree.
You know, we're going to.
Concludes all of the ones in, yep.
Get that up for the commissioners to view. Commissioners, let me run a quick report because I don't see it.
Works on the building department.
I don't see it in the packet.
Oh, here it is.
This is the first one or second one.
That word is over there?
Marsha. Marsha? She waits at the Lakeshore Camp Day. Her day song. She was waiting, I was still the day up there at the Fair Board meeting, always smiling. Though she's smiling back in there. Just enjoy what she's doing. That's Mimi Nims up here, if you want some, Gabby. That's how they eat small. That was the general fund reserve.
I don't see ones for Hurricane. On which.
So YCAP, we didn't.
YCAP facing out, is that what they're doing?
It went through leadership changes. And kind of had to pull their reins back in, and I don't know where they're at this. Maybe that when I did stuff.
All right, sorry about that. Commissioners, this is for contribution. Well, the, this is a levy that the county levies for the airports, for McCall, for Donley, and for Cascade.
So save as last year.
That's what we're proposing at this point in time.
You haven't come in and asked for any more.
And I don't know necessarily if the airports are aware.
Oh, they are aware. We went through this years ago. We gotta come in and ask if they want.
This is what we're proposing at this point in time.
You're gonna get, maybe you've already told us, I don't know. The reason why we fund airports is to allow us to count, you do a fire camp on that airport if we get a fire. And no charge. That makes sense.
Yeah, I remember they.
So that's the only thing that it can be used for?
They had a camp.
Any other emergencies, evacuations, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. So. Had fire camp at Cascade, but. You hear they had the Four Corners fire?
That was out of my place. But they stashed the helicopters at Cascade Airport.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them down there.
And I'm trying to figure out, maybe you guys know what they're doing with that, the area that they just leveled and flattened. I don't know if that's a tie-down place or if that's for.
I have no idea. I'm waiting to see. Bears?
Where at?
I don't know.
Where at?
Cascade.
Oh, the Cascade Airport.
That is a huge chunk of ground.
Yeah, they cleared a big, big area.
So Doug, with the airport, do they have a certain percentage of levy that they can do, or this is just a?
Yeah, they, they have a, that is correct, Commissioner Mopkin. They have a maximum amount that they can levy for, or that the county can levy on their behalf.
That came out of our 3% budget, does that in addition to?
No.
So in '23, they didn't use any of it, and then this year they've used 14?
We just have given them half of.
We just have given half of the contribution, Commissioner Thompson.
We will.
Right here.
They use it all every year.
They usually use it all?
I would assume that they use every. Yep.
Doug, do we need to break that down for each airport?
We do.
Okay, think about the way the budget goes for the county. Give the first.
Thinking we need to break that down to make sure everybody knows.
Again, in July.
I see.
Hard to remember.
So you'll see a lot of the Dalmatians.
Split half of that.
What was it, $15,000 McCall?
I don't think it's that much to McCall.
Maybe $12,000 McCall, $8,000 to Cascade. Six or $7,000 to Donley. And it's interesting, I have a friend that's in charge of all the airports for ITD, all over the state. And they have really shoved a lot of money into backcountry airports. They're going in and re-leveling it.
So the contribution is 77,800, or it's 15,600 to McCall?
So all three airports get all the same amount?
No, there, there was been a, over the years. It's been the same. So, and I don't know how that was determined, but it's. The contribution has been 16,000, excuse me, let me repeat myself. 15,600 for the McCall Airport. 11,753 for the Cascade Airport. And then $897 for the Donley Airport.
Wow, so they mow the grass. Interesting grass strip.
Yes, that's correct. The city of Donley just has a. So that's been the contribution over the years.
And we also spray their wheat.
The other thing, I mean, Jen's, this would be your guys' airports, Cascade and Donley. McCall is going to start charging a touchdown fee. So for anything that's a larger aircraft that doesn't pay for parking and have a storage there, they're going to charge. That's the way a lot of the smaller airports are doing it now. So that would be another revenue source for them.
Well, the other thing, sit out on the tarmac or two?
It's to actually land at the airport. It's all done through a, I don't, I think it's an FAA application.
You mean like land, fill up, take off?
Potentially.
Drop, drop people off and leave. They charge them for that.
And you also get a chunk of change from the feds for the smoke jumping.
Oh, yeah, they use it a lot.
Hey, we good on that one? You want to go to court?
Okay, yep. It's in last week's packet.
Oh, that's why we're not seeing it. These are all in last week's packet.
Uh huh. I can. 651. This is for the court budget. And the only thing that we are changing is we are, as I talked with the commissioners, I'm proposing that we increase the contract professional services from 1,000 to 11,000, and that would be for any type of indigent attorney that is needed for a child protection case. The state did not fund that, those, well, there, there is $500,000. My understanding is there's a pool of money that the entire state, all of the 44 counties can apply for, for indigent services related to child protection or any time that it's, an attorney is appointed, when it's not a criminal case, any civil case, when an attorney is appointed, there is $500,000 in a pool that counties can apply for, but once that money is gone, it's gone. So I do feel that the county needs to fund at least $10,000 for attorney services when an individual is determined to be indigent and they have the opportunity to get attorney. And it's for child protection cases, it's for termination cases, guardian at Lydham cases. So there are a few cases that might require an attorney to be appointed that hasn't fully been compensated by the state. I'm explaining myself.
So Doug, a couple of questions. Is this where we would put the 1,500 in for community guardians?
No, we do that in indigent.
Okay, then the second question here, on your psychological indigent, you went over budget last year. Is there a concern there? Do you want to leave it at three?
I think we leave it at where it is, Mr. Chairman, because it's, it's crapshoot, right? You never know. Yeah, it varies every year.
And transcripts are way down. Is there any interpretation or language? Where does that go? Just a hard interpreter?
So the trial court administrator actually covers those costs for any type of indigent.
So that's not our expense?
It's not our expense, it's the Supreme Court's expense. If there's an individual that requires any type of language services, which we found out does include sign language, we would contact the trial court administrator, and that expense is a Supreme Court expense. So we do not need to budget for any type of indigent services.
So Doug, indigent, other psychological. Psychosexual?
No, psychological.
That's why he just said he wanted to leave it there.
This one right here, yeah. So if the, if a defendant or if an individual is required to, if a court, if the court orders an individual to complete a psychological evaluation, that cost comes out of the court budget. Typically, it is, there is an order to have that be reimbursed. The initial expense is required to come out of the court budget. You don't really know how many of those are going to be ordered each year, so it is a projection.
So that's why it jumped up.
Chairman Hasbrook indicated, yeah, it did go over this fiscal year. We had more psychological evaluations ordered than normal. But I do think in general, the $3,000 amount is probably saved.
Probably works.
When do we end up tapping with the LARP?
We're still working on that, Mr. Chairman, to determine if the state should be paying that.
Well, that wouldn't be the B budget.
It is, it's a B budget, because it's a contribution, yes, sir. It's this contribution right here.
75?
And Valley County has really gotten a break because the A County pays for the law clerk, and they pay their law clerks a nice wage, and A County covers 90% of that. Valley County's contribution for the law clerk for District 4 is very minimal. However, across the state, it varies. I mean, Oahu County, they pay like $30,000 for their law clerks. So right now, their, the clerks are looking at legislation to have the state pay for that because technically it's a state employee. It's not a county employee. So our argument is why are we paying for a state employee salary?
That makes sense.
Or we have to have legislation changed. So the, the court's budget, there is an increase of 10,000, and specifically because of that, I, I feel we do need a budget for essential indigent attorney.
Okay. You guys good with that one?
Yep.
Airgrounds and buildings. Go there next.
So Doug, you want to get a hold of their secretary and say, we need your budget? Or do I need to do that or?
Mr. Thompson, if you don't mind, yeah, I don't even know who the treasurer is.
I'll get, I'll get a hold of her.
And if they, I would highly recommend that they make a formal presentation to the commissioners about what their contribution request is going to be this fiscal year 2025. I think there was a, Commissioner Mopkin, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but the county started budgeting for the maintenance of the buildings. This contribution is supposed to be for the fair and rodeo operations.
Right.
And I think it is wise for the commissioners to have them formally come in, provide to you, have them provide to you their understanding of what their expenditures are, what the revenue is, and to advocate what their contributions to be. The 4H is mixed in with them, so. We, the commissioners did increase that drastically in 2023, is when the first $70,000, when it was increased to $70,000. I don't know if that's something that.
So let's, let's talk about, you know, just a little history on this, if needed. So we, we increased that before ARPA became. So we were going to increase that so that they could do some of the work to the area and get air crewed and have a funding mechanism to do that yearly. We have given them all the money that they need to redo that entire thing. And so this fund really needs to be, is what does it cost them to put on? And fair and rodeo are separate in their books, but the rodeo wants to keep all of the income from the rodeo and not include fair enough. So I know that there was conflict between that two thing in the past, and I basically said, work it out.
So it's all the same.
It's all the same.
It's not though.
But didn't it?
Yes.
Didn't they have revenue last year of $85,000?
I haven't, I haven't seen the budget for it. I don't.
I think it was 83, 85,000 was gross last year.
Good event.
But we need to budget this money within the county now, in Scott's budget, to be able to actually do work on those facilities down there. Because that's where we're doing it. They keep all of the proceeds, whatever they make from the fair and rodeo, they keep. Fair is not a generator, rodeo is. But these 180 seats or whatever it is we're adding to it, they should be more than profitable. That should pay for the next fair and rodeo.
Well, they should be able to, I mean, if they, yeah, I mean, they're showing a, a three-year run of this is what it's costing, and this is what we're making. Once they start showing that, it's like, yeah, we don't need to budget this much anymore. Because you guys are now making a profit and you're being sustainable. And you need X amount a month, amount to put the fair and rodeo on, but you're also making money.
When I took that three years ago, they weren't even doing their, nobody had any idea.
Well, I'll be calling.
Now it's.
I'll be calling Carl tomorrow.
Well, we're fully auditing them now.
Yeah.
So, but they, but in the past, Cassie's been the one that brought in that budget every spring. And so we kind of knew what they're, what they were budgeting for. But I, I think we need to take a good serious look at this.
You have to keep in mind, they need a bunch of money this time of year, which they're getting for, like I said this morning, ribbons, belts, hoofies. Judges are a huge expense, life site judges, land, both, and they get a hotel room, they get meals for them. And a judge is going to cost you a grand easy. You come up here one day and judge the peeps. And we, we kind of had a heartburn over that. Why are we paying for a room? Most of the fair is done by 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, it gets too hot. They have time to go home, but that's one of the things that, and they'll be judges from all over, not just in Idaho, they can come all over. And age or airfare, and so there's a lot of things that kind of you got to look at.
If you look at the cycle of the income, though, they should be saving all of that income from last year and have it available to them right now.
Charge the vendors. And so if you saw hot dogs or soup, don't eat that money.
Would you have, would you have their audit?
That being mentioned. Here, I don't think, Mr. Chairman, but I will look for, in an email from Fire Guard Associates. What I do have, I found last year's request from Ms. Carnes. They broke it down to 4H contribution of 20,000, rodeo of 40,000. These are expenditures. Rodeo costs 40,000, open class 7,000, utilities 1,000, and then royalty cost was 1,500.
So basically 50,000. And then what did?
I think it's 69,500 is what the.
Yep.
Looking forward, this is last year's though, Commissioners.
So that's actual of AD or?
This was estimated projection for expenses for fiscal year 2024. Correct, what I just emailed to you.
Right.
I quit keeping all of that after I wasn't in charge anymore. Our MOU with them, though, says that we will maintain. We have the facilities, we will provide the maintenance and the repair. We will consider their budget. Collect taxes for fair purposes is authorized by law and transfer monies collected for fair purposes to the Fair Board Treasurer. Basically just says, we will take care of all the buildings and they'll put on the fair.
Yeah, so they don't, this is for the 23, they haven't got his numbers for the 24, you know.
But within that, they didn't give you their profitability of the, I wonder if I still have that email.
Take your time, you guys. We have lots of time. Sue was on the Fair Board last year.
Not last year.
Two years ago.
It's been a while.
Um, here are.
I don't think we can make a decision on this today anyway. We need to hear from them. I don't think we can make a decision on this today anyway. We need to hear from them.
I need to see the revenue, sir.
Yeah, I got a note here. Get a whole Carl. Get that in.
But who would've sent us the audit? Who sent it to us, or would we, would've gotten it directly from the auditor?
I probably would've sent it, or it came from Mr. Wygar. I have an email right now into Mr. Wygar to see if he did in fact send it to us, or, if it's included in the audit from the entire Valley County audit. I, I, I think it was a separate audit. Actually, it is, commissioners, it's, I do see it was on page fifty-two. It's just mentioned as county fair, um.
The brain just emailed this to.
Shows the expense.
The room.
Well, this has actually had a fund ba- balance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three of fifteen thousand seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, so lower than I thought it was.
Fifteen thousand eleven. So they see all the bills and that's what they got left. So that's their carryover.
Have we done, uh, second half contributions?
We have not. We have not made, uh.
So we still have thirty-five thousand to give them right now?
Correct.
So we should go ahead.
And we'll do that after the next turnover, right? This large turnover that's happening right now, um, that's when we do the large second half cost.
Second half.
So we can go ahead and do that. That would give them forty thousand, which should pay for a lot of what they've got right now or in need right now. But until we see their projected budget, we hold on this.
Got a note for Carl.
Yeah, we'll turn it over.
I told him that at the meeting, we didn't see, we needed that, so.
One other thing, I kind of roll through back my mind is if we jump up the, the number of people that can attend the rodeo this year, that's gonna bring in a lot more revenue.
So what are they charging? Isn't it ten dollars a seat?
Uh, I think it depends on the.
I don't know that one.
I think little kids are free and then over twelve is. Oh, that's a good question.
Jenny always, Jenny and Carl always take care of that, so.
Well, I'm wondering, is it three hundred fifteen thousand carryover? Do we need to do the full seventy?
Only a thousand eighty dollars for another hundred and eight seats. They need to adjust their seat prices for.
Hundred and eighty seats.
Hundred and eighty or a hundred and eight?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty, so that's eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
They need to adjust their seats, and that's cheap. I mean, to pay back those bleachers that cost eighty thousand dollars, the return on that investment is twenty years.
Well, the other thing, I think the four H kids, yeah, three, two as well. A lot. I tell you, that's.
They need to look at there. They need to make a look at there. Well, it's a business decision. I mean, it's gotta be ran a little bit like a.
Oh, you have to.
Well, and what we want, of course, the goal is to have all kinds of rodeos and all kinds of events there.
Exactly.
I don't know, I just feel like if they carried fifteen grand forward from the year past, we need to do the full seventy.
We need to know what they're gonna spend it on first.
Well, for this year, I think we just need, we need to just do full seventy and then.
And I could've.
See what their budget is and then see what, see what it's gonna look like next year. They gotta, they gotta get us our budget though.
It was the name of the old treasurer, Jill. So.
AC Carnes.
AC Carnes.
She's like a.
You always wanted Jill to do it.
She didn't want to, she's.
Got that message. Look, Alex doing it now.
Some to pay for those lights.
She does the books for Albie. I don't know her name.
Need to take it down some to help pay for those lights.
Oh, yeah. King Island.
So it's, I don't have anything.
See what, see what they're gonna need.
Okay, so we're just gonna leave this one cooking a little bit.
Okay.
Let's go on down to Health District.
Sue needs us.
Just have a quick.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, um, we all have something to call on Wednesday, right?
Yes. I'm just going up here to Oki's office from two to three on that regional landfill meeting.
Okay, so the, the last one I have scheduled on Wednesday of personal appearance, for all appeal and such, uh, exemption appeals, is one o'clock, so we should be done at two o'clock on that, so I didn't schedule anything else. But in between these exemption appeals, we're gonna try to do property taxes as well.
Are you gonna do all the personals in one day?
No, it's not.
Okay.
We're, um, I'm just gonna try to do the value of fields in between. Uh, unless I have to act, schedule, and then they think, here, schedule, I'm just gonna schedule for Friday. Missouri, you asked me, so two guys. I don't know what to schedule. How do you want me to schedule Wednesday?
I was just asking, since he was out, I can get into the chiropractor at three twenty, but I didn't know what the schedule was.
I don't have anything scheduled in the afternoon, but I'll have the appraisers, uh, present it's up to you. Um, so I'm asking, do you want to not schedule anything else on Wednesday?
So I guess I'm a little confused, cause I thought you had six and one, you say seven. Um, and we do that all in one day?
Oh, oh, well, today's the last day to appeal. They've been.
So you don't know those numbers yet?
No, I'm up to twenty-two now.
Oh, you have gotten more, okay. And they're all non-personal?
No, no, um, I, I'm sorry, I don't have an account.
Okay. So we, we should be able to finish up on Thursday?
No, she's scheduling on Friday too, so.
Well, we, our schedules are very, very busy this Friday, so I'm sure I'm hoping.
So you got them one right after. There's no gaps in between anything?
Okay, so go ahead and schedule that and just cancel mine, and Elton and I can do them. I mean, Neil doesn't need to be here. So he can go ahead and hop out.
Just gonna miss from one forty-five on, cause I'll be at Oki's office. And wincey, just wincey.
Right, 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 okay.
So they could finish up from there on, however late you guys go.
Okay, so you're not gonna schedule?
No, go ahead. I'm committed to this.
I would rather have Friday off.
Well, you're not gonna get it off, I'm so sorry.
Well, I just won't show up.
You know where you live, we'll send a deputy.
I'll get that, that call from Doug.
Just ask me, two of us.
All right, so, um, all right, then I'll go ahead and. Okay.
Yep, we good?
We're on.
Yep. So we're, let's go back to Health District.
Commissioners, as you're fully aware, there was a presentation by Director Russell Duke. Unfortunately, Valley County are asking for a fourteen percent increase, uh, from last year's contribution. That's what we have in fact budgeted is the amount that they have requested, which is two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. I think this is the biggest hit we've had.
This was because their insurance has gone up also.
Well, and then you remember the formula of population and your value, figures out what each county pays. Doug has that. Because of our values, our high house values, we got hit further than Ada County did. I think Ada County was only like six percent.
I don't know, what the house values has to do with it, we don't.
It's not, not house values, it's a pre, total praise value divided by the number of residents.
Our praise value doesn't really do anything as far as our budget goes. Hell, I mean, we, we get all the praises in the world, but.
What's that gotta do with?
It's the state code formula that determines, and because of that, we got hit the hardest.
Are we obligated then?
Well, I get that, but what's that gotta do with health stuff? Same people.
Well, and for years, and this is the first time I remember it. I've been on it for ten years. Normally Ada County gets nailed hard because of their, like, situation reversed against us this year. And I think Boise County and, and Elmore County got a, pretty good fund, just Ada County.
If I could just refer you guys to the, if you wanna revisit the presentation, uh, that, Director Russ Duke provided, or I can, I can provide you the handout again, I don't know if you guys don't have it.
You know, that's, I thought about that earlier today. I'm going, you know, they, they come in so early and give us these handouts, then we keep us. And so we get here and it's kinda like, yeah, I remember him being here, but I remember what.
Parks Office keeps it.
Well, you're a good man for doing that, but we need to make sure they get electronically sent, so we can keep them that way.
I have Commissioner Moplin, but I don't.
Usually, I keep everything that I get sent electronically, but.
I look at it while you're looking.
Absolutely.
Cause, here it is, right here, there's our fourteen. Uh, Elmore County got a four point four, Boise County got eight point six, and Ada County was the lowest. And that's the formula based on market value and population. So all this crap that comes from the state legislature, that's.
So we are obligated then to do this?
Yeah, I would say, yes, we are in fact obligated. We don't, I mean, we could.
And, uh, write about it, then we just move on. We're obligated to do it.
Using higher math to be able to.
Why?
I don't get what assess value has to do with.
Doesn't have anything to do with anything.
The legislature thought it did way back twenty years ago, is that's the formula they came up with.
Well, and then they capped us at three percent, so they're sorry to change the whole dynamic.
And they're actually still in control of what we can charge to inspect restaurants. That's a state legislation formula too.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on. Elections consolidation. And that one is one fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, this budget, and commissioners, this budget is, uh, funded fully by the state. We get, uh, a contribution each year, um, from the state to, to fund the consolidated elections, which is like the city elections and the taxing district elections. Uh, so this is, we're, we are not proposing any type of increase to this budget, uh, what we was looking for last year.
So if next year EMS wants to try to run that levy again, this, the state can still pay for that.
Right.
And you don't use any leftover funds for cash carryover, do you?
Um, you can, we have in the past for equipment, so we purchased our e-pole books, uh, a portion of the e-pole books came out of this budget.
So that twenty-five thousand, that's what I was looking at, is the capital equipment. So are you saving for that next round of equipment?
We, we, uh, we are having the conversations to determine, uh, if we are in fact going to be purchasing any, um, new technology, any additional pole works.
So do you need twenty-five in there for that? What's your cash carry on that one?
Uh, the cash carryover for this budget is significantly higher.
Yeah.
But we are, again, the, the eighty-five thousand dollars that is budgeted, um, we will be funding the capital equipment with remaining cash. We receive approximately sixty thousand dollars from the state each year for consolidated elections.
Well, that twenty-five really, you're just carrying your.
Yes.
Well, using to pay for our new desk.
Cause this is elections related? We're not part of the electorate like that, Neil.
Okay, and let's move on down to junior college, and the budgets there are just below election. Last year we used eight thousand, three hundred and fifty.
Messengers, we'd love to have this at fifty thousand, right?
Yeah.
Um, we've attempted over the years to educate the schools, educate the public, that this money is available through the counties for, uh, any type of junior college. Um, there's up to three thousand dollars, uh, per life that you can apply for. Unfortunately, I, this budget's very underutilized. It's all funded with liquor dollars. Uh, the liquor allocation dollars that we receive from the state are utilized to fund this budget.
So what's our balance on that now? Transfer that back to the general fund, you don't use it?
People are just not using it? And that's it?
I have talked about this one everywhere I go.
The issue is you can only go to junior college. You can't go to U of I or B of U.
CWI?
CWI, College of Idaho College of Southern, that's the only three colleges. And here we work with Al Brian Wayans and McColl, so we can get McColl College as a qualified.
Two-year college, I mean, you got two-year college.
Either out of, uh.
Corley.
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, Commissioner Moplin.
So, I mean, maybe take that down to fifteen, and, and then we might wanna use part of that.
We're probably thirty thousand now.
It's amazing people don't use it. They follow resources. And it's, they don't have to have great grades, they just have to apply for it.
And go to the classes, right?
Go to the classes.
And any of us get it for a lifetime. We get three thousand dollars for a lifetime. Um, because this is, because it's annual funding, if you start using it, then we can increase that.
Correct. Can we?
We save some there and.
Can we cut that liquor funds, Doug?
Yes.
And use them somewhere else?
Yes, you could apply them to the general.
So we got thirty thousand in there, would you wanna take it down to what? Three fifteen?
Fifteen.
Twenty, fifteen, seventeen?
Fifteen would be, I mean, look what they're using all the time.
Yeah, it's still.
It gives us a little bit to save for the following years, and it's funded annually, so if we see, you know, people starting to use it, then we can change that.
Okay. You got that one, Gabby? Next one, we got two more, we're gonna be just right. The next one is Tork, one twenty-four.
Salaries.
And Tork is.
Tork went up.
Yeah, commissioners, this one hurts. We got hit with a twenty-five, twenty-six percent increase. Um, from two hundred and fifty-seven thousand to three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Can you explain that to me?
So that's our premium for ICrim. If you recall at the conference that we just attended, they gave us, uh, an explanation of why there is such a significant increase to premiums across the state.
Firing cars.
Are we putting in, having now this building plus the some merit title?
So this includes, uh, we, they're fully aware, um, and this is what the, uh, the estimate was.
Has been added to.
Yeah, it's been added to our insurance.
I'll bet that's why it went up so high. Having another percent. Maybe, yeah, they didn't break it out.
Twenty. Doesn't break it out.
We were asking about mold in this building. They're aware of that.
That one, we just have to eat.
That one unfortunately, and that does include the, um, the deduction for our jail being in compliance, the sheriff's office, uh, having that policing policy. Um, that is including our, our reduction because of, uh, us completing the requirements.
Yeah, we got a good, good rule.
Okay, so the last one on the list then is Veterans Memorial, and we, we pretty much come out eighty-five hundred. That's kinda what we spend. This is for Jamie Coffey Kelly.
No, that's, this is a contribution just to the American Legion, Mr. Chairman.
Where's, where's the other?
That's funded in, uh, just the general fund, and she is not asking for an increase. Um, we can go to that after this. You guys can take a closer.
Well, this is just for the American Legion.
That's correct. This is to the contribution to the American Legion for maintenance, uh, just general, uh, maintenance of the building.
They didn't ask for any more?
Uh, no.
Okay.
They've never come and asked us for extra anything.
They have never come, uh, approach the county for, just additional contribution.
I'm just surprised McColl doesn't fund that.
Where do they get, does anybody know where they get their monies from? It's just dues.
But they have dinners there.
Dinner, dinners, and rent out weddings, anything that's, what is it, uh, we, we pay them to have elections there, it's what, a hundred and fifty bucks?
They don't pay them anything.
They don't charge for that anymore?
Don't charge.
Used to be a hundred and fifty, eighty.
VAC on the outside.
They're gracious enough just to donate.
Didn't charge us for the Lincoln State thing, or? You didn't? They, they charged the meal and that was it. They don't, they don't charge, what was it, VRCC? They didn't charge us for those forums. So they did charge us for that Lincoln State.
You know, that's something that just tripped up in my little brain. If we ever build like a community center, we're gonna have to think down there. That's not gonna affect their. And you know, that's something that is tripped up in my little brain, if we ever build like a community center, or kind of a thing down there, that's not gonna affect their income. Don't be telling me, up at our place instead of there.
It could, I mean, if, well, if you do events there, you're gonna be, more people could show up.
Yeah, you can do a bigger crowd.
Bigger crowd, so. We definitely need that, but, the whole county's.
Well, I wish we weren't so tight, because they're not charging us for elections, because of the money we send them now, but. Just whatever we should.
Except we pay the hundred.
No.
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 I.
And we do like, the bank and all that stuff, if you're doing it.
Nope.
The bank in McCall doesn't charge?
The only, uh, Don Lee Bible charges is a hundred dollars.
Well, if we ever check any, gather the bits to McCall.
So the veterans, you know, I, I one hundred percent, you know, support the veterans. The hall is, I mean, I'm just really surprised that we only give to one center in the county. I mean, there is another Veterans Memorial in McCall. The city, I think, probably just takes care of that, but when the city moves out, that becomes the veteran center again. And so, you know, I have no idea if they're gonna require anything, but I really wanna support Jamie and the work that she's doing. Or in supporting the building, I, we don't have any idea, I mean, do they have, you know, fifty thousand dollars in the bank? Because they make all this money, we've never asked for them to even give us a, any kind of a presentation or any kind of financials, the veterans.
Here?
Yeah. Any kind of a presentation on what their funding is. We have very limited funds to continue to support all these things. We gotta figure out which ones we're just doing because we've always done it, which ones need the money.
Yeah, we had to talk to less, talk about all that.
Hey, are we done?
Did you wanna go back to?
Which one's Jamie's?
One hundred and eighteen, that's just the general fund?
One hundred and eighteen, oh.
So who do you even contact on the veterans, you know, even get any kind of a?
I don't know who the resident is, I don't know if there is.
Just sending this money, and, you know, we never hear what they're doing, I mean, I get it, I totally support that center, but I also support other ideologies in the, in the county, and everybody's asking for money, and we only have so much to give. So do we ask for a presentation? Do we ask for a financial report?
Commissioners, in general, if you look at it, um, in code, you do have the ability to, to levy, um, for a memorial, right? For a veterans memorial, and, believe, if you break it down to how much that is a month, it's really not that much. I think the Commissioners should continue to provide them with the contribution each year that is allowable. But if we're inclined to ask for a presentation, we can definitely reach out to the Legion and have them buy a presentation. Where that money is going to, I believe it's probably going to power bills, um, solid waste pickup, it can go to like, uh, anything related to the maintenance of the buildings.
propane, they use a ton of propane.
Is it time for them to provide a presentation to you to show them, to show you how they're spending that money? Yes, absolutely, for transparency purposes, it definitely makes sense.
The, um, this one, this is the general fund, you can see, this is some of the areas where we do a lot of McCall's and Yak.
Well, the only thing I'm bringing this back up, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is just to show you, the Veteran Services Officer, uh. She is, she has indicated to me, uh, that when, since you guys have increased that funding, uh, that is sufficient to. So what you have done is you've added a thousand dollars for training for her, and then a contribution of seventy-eight hundred dollars, which is broken out monthly. Uh, she does not believe that that needs to be increased, and she is adequately being compensated for the work that she's doing.
That's Jamie, so that's six fifty a month, plus a grand for office stuff. Jamie does a great job. Anything else on there you wanna talk about?
Not at this. Sorry.
Not right now, he's got him. So, is there a way, Gabby, could you do a spreadsheet for us on all of the, the contributions that we make? A separate one that actually is just the contributions? The name of the, you know, the group, and then the amount that we're actually giving, so we can get one report that states we're giving. By the time we put all of these together, I bet it's a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred thousand dollars.
Do you want the ones just for like the, the senior center, the McCall's, Treasure Valley, just, just these ones?
Treasure Valley Transit.
These are really all of the.
But also the Veterans Memorial is not, you know, in that. Can, do we have the authority to levy separately for the Veterans Memorial?
Yes.
Not within our own general fund?
Correct, it's, it's a.
It's a separate levy.
Separate levy.
So is that what this, what we're currently doing?
Yes.
Okay, so this doesn't affect our budget?
Well, it impacts the, the three percent, the three percent increase, right?
So it does, okay, right, so it's coming out of that.
It impacts the overall.
You guys stop yelling over there?
I just. I, I think we need a bottom line number.
Of all the contributions that we're, the county's made.
And then we can kinda separate out, this is for veterans, this is for, you know.
Whole people.
Well, the seniors, I, I just feel like there's got to be, we need to start something that's a little more cohesive. Because we're just doing this randomly, I mean, one off here and there, and we've never really added up what our contributions are. And I've been talking to the community, saying, you want us to fund these programs out of your taxes? And I'm getting a strong no. If I wanna support that, I will support them with my own money, whatever's left over. So I, I think we need to, for transparency purposes, we need to state, this is the things we're supporting on your behalf. Some things we have to, McCall's we have to, um. You guys know what I'm saying, I mean, that's my feeling, I don't know what you guys.
But I think what you have to realize is, these got to this point over time, it wasn't like they just came in last year, asked for this money, these were kinda built up over time, now like Rise Up To Thriving, Idaho, Yak, all that, that's seventy grand.
And those are all new requests.
Those are all new requests.
So we're adding to all the time, we've gotta be careful, because it becomes unintended consequences, and all of a sudden, we're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on behalf of the taxpayers, and they didn't tell us to do that.
And you see, if you go over look at opioid settlement funds, we didn't spend all of it, and we're gonna get more.
Well, and that's where I thought a lot of these programs were headed toward.
Could've been what I thought too, but.
The ignite was doing opioid.
You gotta tie them into opioid or substance abuse.
And that's, yeah. So it's, it's becoming more and more vague to me on exactly who we're giving to, what the requests are, and we're getting so many of them. And so it's, it's time to.
Well, our postage went up, didn't it? Holy smokes, ten grand. What's the deal there, Doug?
Cost of stamps that was going up?
Also employee got a, got a raise.
The number of.
Actually postage was stated as having on this chairman.
Well, the year before we spent forty-four, now it's gone up ten grand.
We've extended thirty-one thousand so far.
Last year we budgeted forty-four eighty.
Budgeted fifty-four.
It hasn't gone up at all, the budget. Couldn't spend all the budget.
Oh, that's too, uh, wait, oh, that's the.
It keeps tracking like that.
I'm thinking the one on the left is what we over budgeted here before. What else is on?
Did we finish all the ones here this week? And this was all the ones from last week that we didn't get.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess we're done.
Okay. Continue to have work, we'll reach out to the Legion. Um, if Mr. Thompson doesn't mind reaching out to President of Fair Board.
Yep.
That would be appreciated.
I've got a note here, call him right now.
So where are we at on McCall, or the senior center here too? Being, do we know where they're at, are they doing a presentation, are they doing?
Do you remember last year we each, eleven thousand? Didn't ask for any more.
Are they, are they open, are they, I mean, I think we have some responsibility as Commissioner to make sure that the program is still in our possession, what are they doing with these funds?
Um, you can start going to lunch here on Tuesdays. Tuesdays and Thursdays.
But I work in here Mondays and Wednesdays, that doesn't work for me.
The foot clinic is there on like, two weeks every month, or one, two days every month, they have a foot clinic. And remember, we're getting, I think it's five grand a year from the church, on the Cascade one, I don't know if McCall brings any revenue.
So I'm gonna put on my, I'm a regional player hat, but we provide them this building. They don't pay us anything for the privilege of their building. We give them the same amount of money that we give to the senior center in McCall, and we don't provide any of that to the, the center in McCall. So if you look at what we're contributing to our senior population in McCall, it's eleven thousand dollars, these guys get far more than advance. And they've really struggled to stay open, so it would be, it would be good.
Do they have an active senior center?
Oh, yeah.
So you might pay, you go talk to them. Say now, hey, how is the finances, maybe they don't want it, or don't need, or maybe they do, I don't know.
People are fairly active from what I've seen, they're.
If we, if we pull the funding of that, we know Cascade will close.
And I'm not saying pulling the funding, what I'm saying is, we don't hold them accountable, even letting us know where they're at. I mean, last year we pulled, I think we withheld contribution, short term, because they weren't even open. I mean, they don't pay rent, I, I don't know how vibrant they are, and why would I, as a taxpayer, continue to support something that may not be open? You know, and, and if this is their only source of funding, I, I would just like to know a little bit more about their program, before we're putting taxpayer money behind it.
And I think they charge ten dollars a meal.
They had last year, they hadn't filled out their federal forms, they couldn't even do their, you know, a lot of the lunches, so. At some moment in time, you just gotta hold people accountable.
They're almost.
If you're gonna get taxpayer money, you at least have to be doing their job on the other side.
I would at least ask for a budget, like you're doing with the fair and all that, hey, where are you spending your money? We're paying the power bill, we're paying the heat bill, we put in the new oven hood, we spent a lot of money on that facility, but it's our facility. And McCall's is a different deal, I guess, the city owns it, or is it?
City owns it, yeah.
So why? We own this one, we support it. See, McCall owns that one, so why are we supporting that?
Because it's the seniors. But why would we support?
The city will take care of their own senior center?
Those are the questions you gotta ask. We, we felt like back then that if we're gonna do one this, we gotta do the other one the same. Takes all the political crap right out of it.
Well, I, I get that, but, you know, it's like.
Why would we give this one anything, we're already providing them a building and all of the expenses.
Well, the one thing, they're competing with American Legion on meals, American Legion just kills them on Friday nights.
Um, the one thing that, that's bothered me, I don't know about McCall, but this one, they used to do Meals on Wheels. You remember last year, they lost that contract, because they didn't get the paper worked in?
Right.
And I said, so are you guys gonna get back into that? Well, about that time, remember, two board members got sick, and everybody was.
They were in fire.
Showing up and not showing up, and.
We should go into executive sessions, Doug.
Yeah, we do. Okay, so, predict agenda items and action items, this is an executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four, two oh six, one F, do I need a motion? In a second, please.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six, one F.
I'll second.
We got a motion, a second by Rokoff, please.
Opposite eye.
Opposite eye.
That's where I, Doug, will be in at two oh.